Good evening, and welcome to the Everett School Committee meeting for Wednesday, September 7th. Clerk will call the roll.
Student Representative Riley Avalar.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardello.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Mr. Mangan.
Present.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Ms. Sarni.
Chairwoman Christiano.
Present. We have eight members present. I would invite you all to join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have a few housekeeping items. I'd just like to let you know that Mike McLaughlin is running a little late, but he will be here. Oh, here he is. Look at that. All right? No worries. And just heard earlier today from Ms. Cynthia Sarni, who is not feeling well and will be unable to attend tonight. So with that being done, Mr. Mayor Di Maria.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Can we just have a moment of silence for Joseph Colometta? Joe is the dad of one of our school teachers in our school system and longtime Everett resident and employee at City of Everett. So if we could have a moment of silence for Mr. Colometta.
And just one more item. I have the sign-in sheet here. If you have not already signed in, is there another one over there, Mr. O'Connor? Okay. So I have a sign-in sheet here, and if you haven't already signed in, there's another sheet there if you want to sign in right now. So Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from August 29th, 2022.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second motion.
Motion is made in second to waive the reading and place on file. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. You are so moved.
Thank you. Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment?
Second.
Motion is made in second to open up public comment. All those in favor? Those opposed? The ayes have it. You are so moved. Just to give you some few housekeeping, we do have eight speakers, and if you could just keep it to two, three minutes, that way we'll be able to have everybody, you know, sign in and get a chance to say their piece. I have up first John Popolo. John, if you could state your name for the record.
You can choose the stand or you can sit. Either one works for anyone.
Oh, he's not sitting right now. Take this one?
Yes, that's.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, councilmembers, I have some comments prepared I'd like to read. As we all know, Everett's housing overdevelopment has resulted in a significant capacity issue for our school facilities and its growing. As a resolution, residents would love to see our underutilized high schools be the solution to overcrowding. Either one or both can be modified to accept entire grades to resolve the overcrowding quickly and to meet the need indefinitely. In fact, modifications could have already been completed if it was not for the administration's indecision. This overcrowding issue did not sneak up on any of us. It's been known issue, just not properly handled. As you all know, the newer of the two schools that would require less work to accommodate our students is Pope John. This is why Pope John, a recent $10.5 million taxpayer purchase, should not be given away for free, to be torn down by a housing developer while taxpayers will still be burdened with the $10 million debt for its purchase. Pope John should be utilized for much-needed space, and the administration is late in doing so. A logical decision to resolve our school overcrowding is to immediately invest in opening Pope John to use available school space that the city already owns and does not have to build new. This decision is needed yesterday by the administration to prevent a $5 million, approximately $500 million, solution for taxpayers' money to build another new high school in the next 10 years. And don't forget the additional 25% on top of the approximately $500 million for the normal contract overruns that the mayor explained a few meetings ago. The taxpayers are already in debt for $10 million for Pope John. To give it away free to a developer for more housing when the children are in unacceptable overcrowded conditions is just not logical. This situation also gets worse every time a new housing unit is approved, be it one or 1,000 units, 100, 1,500, they just keep coming. Our suggestion is to save the taxpayers from the ongoing and significant tax increases required to pay for a new $500 million high school sometime in the next 10 years. Some bad decisions got us into this situation of overcrowding. It is time to start making good decisions for the children and the taxpayers. It is criminal not to immediately approve upfitting existing school space to take on a couple of grades versus spending $500 million plus the 25% guaranteed overrun in the next 10 years. This is a self-inflicted crisis. Capacity should have been resolved two years ago. We're late. The new window of opportunity is now. Open Pope John without any further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tony Raymond. Mr. Raymond, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Tony Raymond, Board Three. Good evening, Everett School Committee. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a large portion of the city and all the students. How does demolishing Pope John High School and making more unnecessary mega multi-units benefit our children's education? It doesn't. And what bothers me is how this crisis overcrowding school issue has been shunned by numerous city officials. Again, stop building. We are sick and tired of construction, heavy equipment everywhere, traffic, detours, no parking, noise, and rats in the city. Stop overloading this city with these mega multi-units. The schools cannot handle this population boom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Maria Bussel. Maria? Please state your name for the record.
Maria Bussel, Freeman Alley. I am here again to voice my opinion on Pope John remaining in school. As I drove to work this morning, which was also the first full day of school, I have never seen such a wave of children. They were everywhere. I tried to go watch my granddaughter at the Webster School. There was absolutely nowhere to park. There was nowhere to go.
I can't even imagine all these children in that small building.
Good evening and welcome to the Everett School Committee meeting for Wednesday, September 7th. Clerk will call the roll.
Student Representative Riley Avalar.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardello.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Mr. Mangan.
Present.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin. Ms. Sarni. Chairwoman Cristiano.
Present. We have eight members present. I would invite you all to join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So we do have a few housekeeping items. I'd just like to let you know that Mike McLaughlin is running a little late, but he will be here. Oh, here he is. Look at that. All right? No worries. And just heard earlier today from Ms. Cynthia Sarni, who is not feeling well and will be unable to attend tonight. So with that being done, Mr. Mayor Di Maria.
Thank you, ma'am chairwoman. Can we just have a moment of silence for Joseph Colometta? Joe is the dad of one of our school teachers in our school system and longtime Everett resident and employee at City of Everett. So if we could have a moment of silence for Mr. Colometta.
And just one more item. I have the sign-in sheet here. If you have not already signed in, is there another one over there, Mr. O'Connor? Okay. So I have a sign-in sheet here, and if you haven't already signed in, there's another sheet there if you want to sign in right now. So, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from August 29th, 2022.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second motion.
Motion is made and seconded to waive the reading and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. You are so moved.
Thank you. Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to open up public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. You are so moved. Just to give you some few housekeeping, we do have eight speakers, and if you could just keep it to two, three minutes, that way we'll be able to have everybody, you know, sign in and get a chance to say their piece. I have up first John Popolo. John? If you could state your name for the record.
You can choose the stand or you can sit. Either one works for anyone.
Oh, he's not around sitting right now. Take this one?
Yes, that's.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, council members. I have some comments prepared I'd like to read. As we all know, Everett's housing overdevelopment has resulted in a significant capacity issue for our school facilities and its growing. As a resolution, residents would love to see our underutilized high schools be the solution to overcrowding. Either one or both can be modified to accept entire grades to resolve the overcrowding quickly and to meet the need indefinitely. In fact, modifications could have already been completed if it was not for the administration's indecision. This overcrowding issue did not sneak up on any of us. It's been known issue, just not properly handled. As you all know, the newer of the two schools that would require less work to accommodate our students is Pope John. This is why Pope John, a recent $10.5 million taxpayer purchase, should not be given away for free, to be torn down by a housing developer while taxpayers will still be burdened with the $10 million debt for its purchase. Pope John should be utilized for much-needed space, and the administration is late in doing so. A logical decision to resolve our school overcrowding is to immediately invest in opening Pope John to use available school space that the city already owns and does not have to build new. This decision is needed yesterday by the administration to prevent a $5 million, approximately $500 million, solution for taxpayers' money to build another new high school in the next 10 years. And don't forget the additional 25% on top of the approximately $500 million for the normal contract overruns that the mayor explained a few meetings ago. The taxpayers are already in debt for $10 million for Pope John. To give it away free to a developer for more housing when the children are in unacceptable overcrowded conditions is just not logical. This situation also gets worse every time a new housing unit is approved, be it one or a hundred, a thousand units, a hundred, a thousand, 500, they just keep coming. Our suggestion is to save the taxpayers from the ongoing and significant tax increases required to pay for a new $500 million high school sometime in the next 10 years. Some bad decisions got us into this situation of overcrowding. It is time to start making good decisions for the children and the taxpayers. It is criminal not to immediately approve upfitting existing school space to take on a couple of grades versus spending $500 million plus the 25% guaranteed overrun in the next 10 years. This is a self-inflicted crisis. Capacity should have been resolved two years ago. We're late. The new window of opportunity is now. Open Pope John without any further delay.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tony Raymond. Mr. Raymond, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Tony Raymond, Board Three. Good evening, Everett School Committee. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a large portion of the city and all the students. How does demolishing Pope John High School and making more unnecessary mega multi-units benefit our children's education? It doesn't. And what bothers me is how this crisis overcrowding school issue has been shunned by numerous city officials. Again, stop building. We are sick and tired of construction, heavy equipment everywhere, traffic, detours, no parking, noise, and rats in the city. Stop overloading this city with these mega multi-units. The schools cannot handle this population boom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Maria Bussel. Please state your name for the record.
Maria Bussel, E. Freeman Allen. I am here again to voice my opinion on Pope John remaining in school. As I drove to work this morning, which was also the first full day of school, I have never seen such a wave of children. They were everywhere. I tried to go watch my granddaughter at the Webster School. There was absolutely nowhere to park. There was nowhere to go. I can't even imagine all these children in that small building. I bet, I'm wondering how it was at the Lafayette School this morning. Did they have problems? Was it as crowded as the Webster School? Just wondering. Every student in this city deserves the opportunity to learn in a comfortable and safe environment. As far as I'm concerned, overcrowding is not safe. When ISD encounters overcrowding in a residence, they make sure that the landlord fixes the issue, sometimes locking tenants out of the apartments, and the landlord is fined daily until those issues are rectified for being noncompliant. What about our children? Are they, is not as important as the residents? We really need to do something, and keeping Pope John as a viable school seems to be the best option right now. Thank you.
Next up, I have Paula Steriti. Paula, can you come forward?
I'm actually going to be short tonight, but.
You feel okay?
Paula Steriti, Hunter Cleveland Ave. First, I wanted to thank everyone who did come to the last community meeting at Pope John. I think it's important for the residents, the students, and the teachers to know that the school committee members are in support of the students and the teachers. One point I just wanted to share, and I think everyone knows, that the Massachusetts State Constitution not only guarantees public education, but guarantees an adequate public education. I can't see how having a school with a capacity of 500 to 600 kids above what the capacity of the building is, it can be rated as adequate at all. As Maria mentioned, the schools have become a trap, and I would guess that if there was ever, God forbid, a fire, that we would have major tragedies in these buildings. I think Pope John, it may not be ideal, but it's the best option we have, and I hope that you all support not just the superintendent, but the students, the teachers, and the community in keeping Pope John a school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have, I can't say this person's first name, so I'll try with the last. That's not usually good, but Ms. Salazar? If you could just state your name for the record, ma'am. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, my name is Cynthia Salazar.
I thought it was that, but I didn't want to.
Yeah, it's Cynthia. No, it's okay. My cursive can be a little tricky sometimes. I'm from 79 Edith Street, and actually, I graduated from Pope John not that long ago. And I can't tell you, that school meant so much to me, so much to so many people in this community. I mean, my brothers' little school, St. Anthony's, right? They tried to raise money to keep the school open. Unfortunately, you know, the board let it close, whatever, it happened. But it would be so devastating, first of all, to see that school completely torn down, especially knowing how crowded Everett High School is and just any of these other schools. Okay, so if we're talking about affordable housing, we have so many developments that are happening, right? A requirement can easily be made so that these buildings, these developers, can have affordable housing in those buildings. I mean, that's an easy way of solving that solution. That's how you can have affordable housing. I mean, we already know how many people are being pushed out of Everett anyway. This is a way to help that and give the children of Everett, I mean, Everett's schools are Everett's pride. This isn't what it sounds like right now. It sounds like you guys are really looking more to something else, and I just hope that you guys think about the children and keep Pope John open and open those doors. I mean, I don't exactly know what is going on with the construction, why it's considered inadequate, but I can tell you, up until a few years ago, it was working just fine. So that is my case with Pope John. Now, my second thing, actually, is I feel like something that I've been noticing around the community is the children just don't seem as involved in the community, period. Maybe, you know, there are some select few, which I think we all know that there are several that are very involved, but I think it would be really nice, I've noticed that other schools, other high schools, will have a community service requirement, and I feel like something like that would be so useful at the high school. And I would just like to bring that up and see if there would be any consideration of that. But that is my time. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening. I did come to the meeting tonight. I did not come prepared to speak, so if you'll just bear with me, I'm kind of speaking from memory. First off, I have very good news. When I came in, Josh came over to me and told me that probably starting next week, you're going to go live with closed captioning. And that's going to be wonderful. I can't hear, and people that have an issue can't hear sitting back there, the same down at the city council, and many people at home cannot get what's being said. They're interested, but they just can't understand what's being said. I also understand, the same as City Hall, we're going to have FOA handheld hearing devices like you would get if you went to a theater. And yes, they work, and yes, I have used them. So I thank the city for doing this. I think it's really great, and it's a step forward. Now for the other news. I'm here because of the overcrowding of our schools. My children are through, but these students that are here today also deserve room in a classroom. A teacher teaching 35 students, that's almost impossible to reach these students. And I haven't seen them, but I understand some classrooms, they've taken some storage closets or other things, and that's not really conducive to teaching. We want the best for our students. So I have some quick figures. I don't know how accurate they are, but I've got 2,200 students at this school. I don't know the complete accuracy of that. I do know it was built for 1750, 10 years ago. The parlor capacity is 650 students, and today, there's over 1,000 students there. I'm told the Kavarian is the worst for overcrowding. Again, I have no figures on that. That is what somebody told me. Now, I don't know, rumor has it, whatever, some students do not live in Everett. So I think if we address that vigorously, we probably could peer those numbers down. As far as Pope John High School goes, it did function as a school until about two years ago, and somebody said to me, it's not handicapped. Well, that's not really true, because there is an elevator when you come in the back and you come to the cafeteria, and there could be handicap parking out there for any student that would need it. That's a beginning. I know you'd probably need another elevator. It's a huge building. I don't know, but it's a beginning. So I'm wondering if we could use it as a bridge school until we get figures in of what a new school is going to cost and try and give some relief to our students presently in our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Sandra. Sandra, if you could state your full name for the record.
Sandra Donnelly. My name is Sandra Donnelly. My child is a student at Madeleine English in the seventh grade on an IEP. She wants to be a vet when she grows up, and Everett High Trade does not have what she would need, and this is her dream. She's had this dream since she was a little girl. I feel she should be able to go to a trade school that will offer her these courses. My daughter works very hard, and I think I should be able to send her to a trade school that offers this to her, and I think the city should provide the transportation for her. I think Everett School should offer my child to go to a VOC to that she will complete her dream. Another issue, another thing I had was, why don't we open the Pope John as a VOC? My daughter has stressed to me she does not want to come to Everett High, and I will not let her come to Everett High due to the safety factors. My issue is, I want her to succeed, not saying she's not going to succeed at Everett High. I am a former Everett High student, graduated 2004. My issue is culinary. She wants to be a vet, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to not let her be what she wants to become. I think we should open the Pope John as a VOC and keep the school open, but that's just my thoughts.
And next up on the list is Mary Forten. Mary? State your name for the record.
My name is Mary Forten. I live on Cedar Terrace. I grew up in Everett, 71 years. My father was a teacher, taught the vocational high school for over 30 years. The year I graduated from high school, there were 1,500 kids at the high school, each class 500. It was crowded. We tripped over each other. We didn't have to do anything in closets, so you guys have expanded past that. But the teachers here are amazing. We are lucky to have the ones we have. They're led by an outstanding superintendent, so thank God we have her. But our kids need more space. End of question. They can't wait 10 years for a new high school. Explain that to the kids who are in the second grade now. You'll graduate from the new high school, but everybody else that comes before you are going to squeeze in closets. You wouldn't want your kid squeezed in the closet. I wouldn't want to be squeezed in the closet to learn anything. You have to give them room. You know what happens in the winter when it snows, and you have a whole lot of kids, and they're kicking outside, and they're wrestling against each other, and the more, less space you give them, the more frustrated they get, increases safety issues. We don't know that, especially if you've had kids Christmas vacation. We need Pope John, at least for the next 10 years. That's not a question, it's a necessity.
I have no other interested party that wishes to speak. Is there anybody else that wished to say a few words, seeing none? I would entertain a motion. Motion is made and seconded to close the public participation portion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. You are so moved. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Roman numeral five is the report of the student representative.
Good evening. In regards to sports, there have been multiple fall sports scrimmages since the last meeting. For Everett High's football team, they won their scrimmage on Friday against Puberty, 21 to 7. The volleyball team had a scrimmage against Pioneer and won three sets. Today, they are playing against Medford. Unfortunately, the field hockey team lost their scrimmage against Puberty, and the soccer team has had two scrimmages, one last Thursday against Northeast, winning 8 to 2, and another last Tuesday against Danvers, winning 5 to 1. Last Wednesday, EHS held its freshman orientation. Assigned-room teachers and student ambassadors were waiting outside to bring ninth graders to their homerooms in the morning. Throughout the day, ninth graders were explaining their A and B schedules and got the opportunity to navigate through all their classes in 15-minute rotations that were smoothly transitioned by ambassadors and EHS staff. On Thursday, Everett High School welcomed back all their students. Students noticed new security measures that had been mentioned in prior meetings, such as security at the back doors, homeroom in the morning, and new mandatory IDs to get lunch. Lunch transitions were relatively smooth for the first day, given that the bell schedule has been shifted this year. IDs were successfully handed out to the majority of students, and everyone received a paper copy of their schedules with the last day to fill out the schedule change request form being today, Wednesday, September 7th. Overall, a lot of changes to get adjusted to, but a great first day at Everett High School. For seniors, there will be multiple opportunities over the next few weeks for students looking into college. There will be a senior parent night on September 20th, a MEFA financial aid night on October 4th, and a college fair on October 19th from 5 to 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Riley. And I just happened to notice the cover of your computer, it's pretty neat. You know, everybody's just usually blank, and it's nice to see you've kind of dressed it up for us all. Thank you very much. Next up, Superintendent.
Thank you. Roman numeral six is the superintendent's report, and I'll be starting with the superintendent's update. So good evening, welcome to our second school committee meeting of the year. The school year is now fully underway as we welcome today our pre-K students early this morning, and I have many highlights to share with you. So first, I'm actually going to rewind a little bit to some updates from the past summer that I wasn't able to get to during our last meeting. This slide features photos from the one-week sports camps that we offered throughout the summer. The camps were a big hit with students and families for a second year in a row. The camps were held at locations around the city and were led by EHS coaches and staff members. The camps also featured a long list of volunteers that were made up of current and former students. And not just one or two volunteers per sport, we had several for every camp that we ran, totaling more than 50 student volunteers in all, and a great mix of young men and women who were able to work with our young athletes, from every sport to football, to field hockey, basketball, to track and field. So thank you to everyone who supported our sports camps this summer. We also had a special guest this summer at the Webster School Enrichment Program on August 20th. Thank you. Professional football player Dalton Keane was kind enough to volunteer his time and spend part of the day with our students. He read a book to the students, took a photo with every class. He was also gracious enough to sign autographs for our students. I do want to thank EPS educator William Norris for coordinating this visit after he met Mr. Keane at a charity event. Mr. Keane grew up in Colorado and attended Virginia Tech University, and currently a free agent, he played for the New England Patriots in 2021 and 2022. Congratulations to Madeleine English School's seventh-grade teacher, Maureen Morelli, who is the recipient of the 2022 EPS Innovation Scholarship. So this is an internal scholarship that we began last year for EPS educators where they can apply to take advantage of a professional learning opportunity. Mrs. Morelli applied for and was accepted to receive this grant to complete a comprehensive teacher training course with Breath for Change, an organization that has certified more than 5,000 teachers nationwide in social and emotional learning and yoga. By completing the training, Mrs. Morelli is now a certified SEL facilitator and yoga instructor. She's looking forward to implementing these SEL strategies in her social studies classroom to better support her middle school students. This is the second innovation scholarship the EPS has awarded. Thank you to all of you for supporting this initiative, and I do just want to say to our educators that we are going to be opening up these applications again, and that we do have room for more than one educator to receive it every year. I also wanted to further spotlight two of the back-to-school events that I do hope will become permanent parts of our school calendars. We held our pre-K premieres on August 23rd and 24th at the Room Escape in Chelsea. This is the second, again, consecutive year that we have done this for the Adams School and the Webster School and Extension families. I want to thank our head teachers, Hillary Stokes and Jessica Redler, and all of the Adams and Webex staff members who attended the premieres. We had food from Texas Roadhouse, desserts from Spinella. We had food from Texas Roadhouse, desserts from Spinelli's, giveaways, arts and crafts, games and activities for our youngest students and their families. I do want to thank also our central office summer interns, Kayla, Sam, Isabella, Brooklyn, and Nicholas for helping plan the festivities. Central Office Administrative Assistant Denise Cardello and our family engagement coordinator Jeanette Velez. Our family liaisons and custodial staff were also instrumental to making these premieres successful. I think the success of these events was also demonstrated by the fact that I had a kindergarten teacher who approached me that her school is interested in potentially having events such as this next year for kindergarten students, as she made the wonderful point that many of our kindergarten students, it's their first time in school too, not just our preschoolers. So that is something that we will be exploring for next year, so I'm happy that we get to continue this tradition and even expand it. We also had our back-to-school bash, as I mentioned, so here are some photos from that, which was held last week before our school committee meeting. We had more than 1,200 students and family members who attended. We had giveaways, a video game truck, photo booth, food from Chicken and Rice, Cookie Monster and Richie Slush, of course. The Elliott Family Resource Center distributed hundreds of backpacks to our students. The Everett Haitian Community Center was also on hand to share information with families. Again, thanks to the many EPS staff members who volunteered their time at the various stations that we set up that day. It was great to see so many of you at the bash, and I look forward to seeing you all at future back-to-school bashes. So it is great now to be back to school. As you know, the school year officially began on Wednesday, August 31st, which was a half day for K to 9 students. I do want to reiterate Principal Lynch and his team's gratitude for the school committee altering the calendar so that that first half-day could be dedicated just to our incoming ninth graders. I've gotten great feedback about the day and it was quite a success. As Riley mentioned, the school, the student ambassadors were a huge help that day also. I failed to mention that they were also a huge help at our pre-K premieres as well. Our first full day for K through 12th graders was Thursday, September 1st. We were off for the Labor Day weekend, but staff did work, returned to work yesterday for our second full day of professional learning with Dr. Jeff Sivers, who I highlighted at our last school committee meeting. Today was our first day back with all grade levels for a full day, including the Adams and the Webster Extension. And I just want to say that the first days of school were really wonderful, really successful, lots of smiling faces. It was great to see actually so many smiling faces. You know, last year we were so happy to just be back in person, and I certainly do not take that for granted, but it definitely felt like a different opening this year to be able to see so many faces, to see so many, you know, happy and smiling people. I also do want to thank the PTOs who helped out tremendously at the Madeleine English, for example. They actually coordinated the entry, made sure that all of the classes were set up in an organized fashion, made that school day and the school year start off really smoothly. Today, it was wonderful that the, at the Adams, they were actually even able to welcome the parents into the school classrooms, which they used to do in the past, but again, they were unable to do last year because of COVID. So again, we're kind of seeing us get to be back to normal and get to see our, our schools really operate like the community that they are. I do want to ask everybody to join me in welcoming the newest member of our central office team to the Everett Public Schools, Rob Marashi, who is a longtime business and financial professional, is the district's new Director of Facilities. He will begin next Monday, September 12th. Mr. Marashi comes to us from City Hall, where he has served in the role of Chief Procurement Officer for the past six years. Prior to that, he worked for Broadridge Financial, State Street Global Markets, Fidelity Investments, and Investors Banks and Trust. Mr. Marashi, who is a Everett High School grad, will lead all of our maintenance and facilities operations. He is ideally suited to lead us in our daily and long-term endeavors from overseeing our custodial staff to helping direct capital projects and helping to upgrade and streamline a lot of our, and modernize our current systems that we have. He also, of course, already has a working relationship with many members of the team. So with every aspect of our district, we aim to have, you know, a first-rate department, and in this case, I'm, I feel like Mr. Marashi is poised to make that happen. So I look forward to welcoming him to the team on Monday. As part of our ongoing efforts to ensure, again, our first-rate facilities department, we want to keep our schools as clean as possible. We recently had Lycor Maintenance Systems demo equipment and cleaning supplies to our custodians. Also Assistant Superintendent Kevin Shaw was on hand as well, as the company showcased different pieces of equipment from different manufacturers. So specifically, we looked at vacuums, carpet cleaners, floor polishers for buffing hallways, school-approved cleaning agents for walls, tabletops, and restrooms. Our team will consult with our custodians on what we need to purchase. Lycor is based in Foxborough and is on a state contract. The company works with school districts and municipalities and offers a full array of products and services. And obviously, Mr. Marashi will help us move forward with this initiative when he joins us next week. In honor of Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month, our English learner department has planned a series of events between September 15th and October 15th. We are in the process of creating this flyer into a multilingual flyer, which we will share with the community in a variety, variety of ways. Our EL Director Brittany Hay and EHS Director Gladys Vaie have organized a great mix of events for different grade levels. So this includes visits by authors David Morales and Ed Roca, movie nights, a culinary night, a staff jeans day on September 30th to benefit the Immigrant Learning Center. We will also have themed Fridays in our schools. Also, our semi-annual EL Family Night is on this calendar. This is a district-wide event that we hold every year, and this year it'll be on Thursday, October 6th at the Parlin School. It's a valuable opportunity for families to learn about our English learner programming and to connect with community-based organizations. We will also, of course, have food and games and giveaways, and we look forward to seeing our biggest turnout yet this upcoming year. That brings me to the end of the superintendent update.
Any questions? Seeing none, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. So item number two is to our approval to submit a formal letter to the City Council, Everett City Council recommending that the former Pope John High School be converted into space for the Everett Public Schools. I do have data to present in regard, in regards to the school capacity and enrollment that has been requested by the committee and the community that will certainly inform this conversation. But, oh, I see.
Let's do the presentation first.
Okay. I'd like to begin by saying that as the leader of the Everett Public Schools, I do view this property as an ideal way to help us address our fundamental need for more space. As the development of the site is considered and debated within our Everett City government and community, it does make sense for the Everett Public Schools to submit an official request to the City Council that the property be converted, or rather, maintained as a school. Our families, students, staff, and residents do need to know, I think, where we as a body stand on this, even though this decision clearly does not rest with this body. I believe our declaration of intent is a meaningful part of the process. I am happy to do this in writing, but it is obviously only with the strong backing of the school committee. This district's need for more space is strictly an objective matter. It is, I want to stress that it's not a gut feeling I have or a conclusion I have reached based on conversations or anecdotes. And with that in mind, I do want to turn to the data. So first, our student populations, as has been mentioned, exceed the intended capacities of several of our buildings. Everett High was built for an estimated 1,700 students and the current enrollment tops 2,100. Everett, sorry, the Whittier School was built for 550 and houses approximately 700. The Caverion was built to accommodate 650, and today is home to more than 950 students. And the Lafayette, built for 850 students, has an enrollment of more than 1,000. The Parlin was also built for 750 and houses over 1,000. Projections do call for our enrollment to increase over the next several years. So here you see our historical and future projections for enrollment. This is impossible to predict, obviously, with any certainty, but we do think that we could potentially have, if we stay on this trajectory, 7,000 students by 2020, 7,700 students by 2026. At the least, I think that these estimations point us that we need to be proactive, that this is not going to be a problem that is going to sort of sort itself out over time. I know that residency is an issue that garners a lot of attention. As we talked about during our last meeting, we have hired two additional attendance officers to help us in this area. I think it is important for everyone to know that EPS does, in fact, unenroll students. In 2021 to 2022, we unenrolled approximately 75 students district-wide, some of which were identified by Keith Longo's 1,600 home visits, and some of which were as a result of tips educators received or educators and school leaders just doing their due diligence on returned mail or, you know, frequent absences or tardies. I do think that three attendance officers will help us to uncover more EPS students who do not live in Everett, but I do not think that the number will be large enough to solve our overcrowding issues entirely. However, to demonstrate that we are dedicated to tackling this issue from all ends, not just increasing space, but also really looking at residency, at our next meeting, we will actually be presenting a new and stricter registration procedure and protocol, which some of you may or may not like, we'll see. It is much stricter, as well as a new procedure for re-verifying residency at certain grade But to get back to the problem at hand, what happens when you are over-enrolled, and I know it's been mentioned by many, we adapt as best as we can and we cope with the consequences. So specialist classrooms are often the first to go. In our elementary schools, art and music teachers move from class to class on a cart, as it is called, and at the Parlin, there are no specialist spaces save for the gym, which is actually the case at several of the schools. Five of six specialists at the Whittier are on a cart, five of eight at the Lafayette. This leads to lost class times, it takes time to distribute and/or set up materials. It obviously also limits what you can do in a class because it's maintained on what you can carry on a cart. District like ours do, however, get creative with space. As you know, at Everett High, we've converted central storage and athletic storage space and a dressing room closet into space for students and staff. Libraries are used for services such as occupational therapy and speech therapy and even two to three classrooms in some of our schools. So for example, at the Caverion, we have multiple classrooms in there. At the Parlin, we have two classrooms in our libraries. Do we utilize hallways? That's a question that has been asked. The answer is yes. The Caverion, Lafayette, Parlin, Webster, and Whittier will report using hallways for small group instruction. This is most often the case during our wind blocks, which again stands for what I need, and that is an invaluable method that we use to focus on targeting supported instruction to our students. As you would expect, hallways are not really meant to be providing high-stakes instruction, and teachers simply can't leverage all of their skills and strategies in that kind of environment. Also, we do have a number of students of school buildings that are not ADA compliant at this time. So without delving too deeply into the raft of research on overcrowding, I, we can say with certainty that it does have a direct and negative bearing on student performance from everything from absenteeism to test scores. In preparing for tonight's meeting, we did reach out to all of our building leaders, not only to get reports on school space, students in hallways, et cetera, but also to give us idea, their ideas on the negative impacts that they're seeing from overcrowding in their schools. In addition to what I've already mentioned, here's a sampling of the other responses. Large class sizes result in minimized movement within classrooms necessary for collaborative learning. Increased demand on teachers of selected populations like English learner students and those on IEPs and 504s. Less space or less-than-ideal space for services such as speech and occupational therapy. Less space for calming corners, reading nooks, creative spaces, and centers for independent learning. Lunchtimes can stretch from as long as 10:20 a.m. to 1:20 p.m. Increased demands on our custodial staff, lack of storage spaces, crowded streets during arrival and dismissal, which poses hazards to our pedestrians, our students, et cetera. So reading that, that list, it is clear how closely associated overcrowding is with safety, and this committee has rightfully pushed for enhanced safety precautions and planning. Your leadership is one of the big reasons that we have a talented professional like Lauren O'Connor serving in the role of Director of Security. It is why you heard our first-year EHS principal Dennis Lynch talk so much about this topic on our, at our August 29th meeting, and it is why we've invested so much money in cameras and alarms. But I do believe that there is more that we can do. In the best possible scenario, we would be able to do something in the short term, something apart from our application to the state to help, to help fund an entirely new school and specifically have access to the Pope John site to utilize it in a way that would positively impact schools and students throughout the district. So if Pope John is in fact an option for us, then we would love to work with the community and the city on making it a reality. If it is not, at least our students and staff will know where we as a school committee stand on the matter.
Do you want to speak? Mr. Marcus?
Thank you. I had a chance the last five months, I decided I wanted to learn more about what's inside, going on in the schools. The superintendent knows, I said, I tried to visit every school. I missed a couple of schools, but every school with the same problems, okay? Kids were sitting in the school, this is, it was unbelievable. This foul, this is how foul it is to the student next to them. So you know if they get sick, it's going to spread it all over the place. How about this one? Kids were studying under the stairs in a school, on a table. That's the truth. So the superintendent just gave you a lot of things, but you know, somebody asked me tonight, something really aggravated me. They said, what do you know about kids or anything? I said, I never had any kids. I said, what do I know about kids? I said, I was a big brother. I went to Mass Hospital School for a year, Perkins School for Blinds, and I coached up here for 25 years. So I think that gives me the right to say, we want to help these people and get this straightened out.
Mr. Ballows?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, and thank the superintendent for this presentation. I was doing my own research and I went back to a previous meeting that we had on April 25th of this year, when the superintendent presented, and I have a copy here, the superintendent presented the budget to the committee of the hall. And the topic of that presentation was safety first. And I recall, and it's here part of the presentation, the issue of security and the issue of overcrowding. So it's not the first time that we as a body hear about this. During that time was also a presentation about the growing enrollment that we have, the number of kids that we have, that even if we hire five more attendance officers and we go to each house in Everett where our kids are registered, even if we identify, let's say, 100 kids, it's not going to solve the situation because the overcrowded is serious, and a serious problem that we have. During that time, the superintendent, I have here as part of the presentation, which was again, April 25th, repeated that Pope John would be a great option. In fact, I went back on the video, and thanks, Mr. O'Connor, for recording all those videos and keeping that online. So I watched the video again, and during that time, the superintendent said to this body, we would respectfully ask the city to let us use Pope John High School building. It's not an easy, simply asking for space, as we need the capital investment required to quickly prep the building to welcome students in September. Remember, this meeting was in June, I'm sorry, April. Naturally, if we had access to Pope John, we look to do something on a larger scale in which is overcrowding across multiple buildings. Excuse me. And even during that time, she said something like, I do not believe tonight is the right time to talk in detail about this, but if it's approved and budgeted, we would work in great detail with the city on this project. During that time, I actually made a motion to ask the chair and the vice chair to meet with the mayor and his administration to talk about space. I don't know if those meetings happened, and then it, I believe that they have happened, but, and also during that time, overcrow, the last part of the presentation was, which is here, overcrowding reduces students' ability to pay attention, increases school violence, and then went on and on and on. So it, it is not the first time that this body hears this. I fully support that, well, first of all, this is a huge issue. I went, like Mr. Marcus, I went to the Webster last week and I saw, no one showed me, I saw the desks that we have on the halls to teach, to saw the desks that we have on the halls to teach, for specialized teaching, because there is no classroom, there is no space. And this is already on the back, on the model that we have on the back, because there's already a model behind the Webster. So when I was walking the halls, I was like, what are these desks here? Oh, these desks are for specialized teaching, because there is no space inside of the classroom, or there's no other classroom that we can teach these kids. So you have classrooms and then you have outside desks to teach these kids. So it's, that's not how we should do. I believe that this is a concern of all of us as a body, there's no one who doesn't agree with it. And because of this, and because it is not the first time that we hear about this issue and that we as a body go to our schools and witness this serious issue, I make a motion to submit this letter to the council for consideration to use Pope John as a, as a school in order to alleviate the overcrow issue that we have, the serious overcrow issue that we have in our schools, and I ask for a second.
I have Ms. Lambert next. On the motion, and a second, but on the, and I did want to, so this has been kind of presented as a you're for or against affordable housing kind of situation, and I want to be very clear, this type of affordable housing, I support it. It is, right now, the only affordable housing project in the pipeline. Unfortunately, you know, we can get into different situations, but I do think, and I would actually ask that we might amend that in, maybe not on this letter, maybe we can send another letter, but I would ask that the school community and the school committee specifically be a part of affordable housing conversations, because likewise, housing in the city impacts our students' ability to learn. And whether that is being forced out and education being disrupted, or whether it's, you know, families split up, joint custody is now more prevalent than ever. It's not a situation where mom gets the kids, mom moves out. Joint custody is very real, and it's, like I said, more prevalent than ever, which makes it a little less clear. And when it comes down to whether a student wants to stay in the school that they've been in for a significant amount of time. So I know a lot of things get thrown into why our schools are overcrowded, but I think the fact of the matter is, they are. And we need to, we needed to work on this a few years ago, but we're here now, COVID certainly played a role in that. But I don't want this to be for or against affordable housing or for or against our students, they're all interconnected. And, you know, I was glad that committee member Barrows brought up, because I had thought we were on record in supporting this by asking for that meeting, and I do remember the, the former assistant superintendent who, in the capital improvement plan, said that there were conversations moving forward. So I was surprised to see this, but I will happily go on record in support of keeping, and also, I think it's, I think people watching should also take a look at what the MSBA application, we applied. That's all that's happened so far. We have not, we haven't gone any further, that's on the Mass School Building Authority. So even to say 10 years, that could be a conservative estimate. But thank you for the time, and I do second.
All right, so let me just, just kind of like give you some real stern warning right now. We have to be civil here, we can't talk out of turn. You've all had an opportunity to speak. I know this can be, you know, emotional and all of that, but we have a meeting to get through, we have items to discuss, and I would just ask you to, you know, if you want to come back up at the next meeting, you're certainly invited to, but we're going to, we're going to have some rules in this room, and that's one of them. So I have next, Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm chairwoman, I sit here this evening, I hear from the public, and I share in their thoughts on needing additional classroom space, that's no secret to anybody in this community. If you ask any resident or any person who lives in the city of Everett, they're going to tell you that our schools are overcrowded. We're not turning over unknown facts here this evening. The fact of the matter is, and many of you know, because it's been publicly denounced, that I live in a new construction building in the city of Everett. There's 40-plus units in that building, and it's one child that lives in the building. Forty-plus units, one child in the building. So to say that this is a school versus house, I echo my colleague at large, Ms. Lambert's comments, this can't be an A or B option, because truthfully, we need both in this community. If you knock on any door, walk down any street in the city, we all know that people are being forced to pay higher rent, that they can't stay in their family homes in which they've lived. I see many of the residents out here that have lived in their homes for decades, and that, that's a fact. So this is not an option A or an option B. But I do have a few questions for the superintendent, and I think they're reasonable questions, and that is, what would we do with Pope John? We did, Madam Chairwoman, Christiana and I did have a meeting with the administration, Superintendent Taliani and her administration sometime ago, maybe in June or May?
April. I thought it was like early.
Spring, springtime.
Early May.
And the question was asked at that time is, what, what plan is there that we need? Where can we take students from building A and building B and building C and minimize the amount of students in those buildings? How could we merge those into a old Everett High School, which we own, which wouldn't cost us nearly as much if we were to convert that building back into classroom space? Or the Pope John, old Pope John High School building? Where would we be able to take students that, A, could probably get to that school, because we know that transportation is a problem in our community, and we know that if we don't have neighborhood schools, you know, if we build a new school that isn't centralized, it's going to be a problem for a lot of families in our community. So where could we see that type of narrowing to be able to pull some students from this building and that building? I don't know if you know that, Madam Superintendent, but...
Yes, so we would be able to offer it as a neighborhood school, so there are students that live in that area. I want to, I'll answer this question the way I've answered it before, is that I wouldn't want to state what I believe the plan should be, because I don't think it is a lateral decision that I would make. I think it would require city collaboration, community input, family input. Do I have ideas about what grades we could put there, what would make sense from an operational standpoint? Yes, but I think that that would be better in a set of recommendations here, options, so that I could get input, or that we could get input. When you do apply for the MSBA, for example, they actually take you through that process, where they have groups that, you know, obviously, we would have limited time, but again, any time that we gain is more than what we've got at this point, if we're 10, 12 years out. So I do think we have the time to be able to get the input that we need in order to make a good decision. To answer your question about if it's going to be able to, like how to minimize the problems throughout all the buildings, I think the biggest question is, how are we going to minimize the overcrowding issues both in the high school and in the K-8s? And I think that that is a valid question. Again, I would have some recommendations for how we could do that. However, my response to that would be that we clearly have overcrowding issues in all of our schools. We're not going to get one grand solution that's going to solve all of our overcrowding issues, so I do want to condition expectations that this is a problem, like a large problem that we're going to need to solve one step at a time, and that it is going to require potentially more than one building, but one building would certainly be a start.
In just a couple of, what building, or what grades would we look to put at there? Would it be a high school resolution?
So as I said, I don't want to make any sweeping statements, because I think it's really important for it to be collaborative, I'd like to hear from this body. I'd like to be able to bring data on, here's the students that live in the surrounding area, because we do have the addresses of all of our students, here are some potential suggestions, here how this would, here's how this would then eliminate some of the crowding issues at this school versus this school. Also, there are obviously many considerations when you think about what grades should go into a school. So for example, if you move one grade out of the high school, is it still part of that full high school? Is it one principle for both buildings, because you, that impacts athletic programming, that, you know, so there are a lot of, there are a lot of different moving pieces that we would need to consider. And again, I, I prefer that that be a collaborative discussion and not one where I put out a mandate of this is what I think, because as soon as I say it, that's going to be the, what everybody says we're doing with Pope John, when at this point, we don't even know that we are able to use Pope John.
Which is, which is fear. And again, I think the residents realize that we have no say in this, right? We've talked so many times about what our rules are as school community members, we have no say other than we can say that we're in support of keeping additional classrooms in the school, in the city, excuse me, but we have no say in this decision. I see Councilor Latanzi here this evening, thanking for coming to hear from you, the residents, they're the ones that need to make this decision in the near future, they're the city councils that are going to vote up or down on, on this. We do have a subcommittee on properties, and I think that having that discussion, as you're stating, I think would be most beneficial for all of us to have a subcommittee on properties, and that's why I think we have that subcommittee in our standard subcommittee structure, so that we could send an item like this to that committee, have that discussion, and get input from parents, hear from them, hear from the administration, hear from yourself and your assistants, and understand more thoroughly on what the vision could be for additional classroom. And that is options A, B, C, whatever that might be. But I think having the ability to have that discussion would only benefit everyone in this community. And I hate to see this be such a contentious issue, because I don't think anybody disagrees that we need additional classroom space. You, Madam Chair, Superintendent, and Chairwoman can attest to, I advocated for that Pope John High School to be utilized during that meeting that we had back in the spring. I said, we need to do something with Pope John. So we don't want to be at each other's throats, we need to work together as a community to figure out a solution to this problem. So I think maybe sending this to property, to be able to have that discussion, could only help all of us as a body and as a community. Thank you.
I have, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I, I agree with school community man McLaughlin to send it to committee to, to discuss, but, you know, I have many words I'd like to make here tonight, but I'll save it for the city council meeting on Monday night. You know, we, there is no needs assessment study you've done to say, to hold on to Pope John for what reason, what kids are going, you're talking about neighborhood kids, well, if any hood school that overcrowded is only about 170 kids, the Lafayette, that's that neighborhood. So I, you know, I think Michael, Councilman, School Community Man McLaughlin made a great point to send to committee, so we can have an open and candid conversation, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I've worked through three school administrations, Superintendent Forrest there, Superintendent Goethe here, and now Superintendent Taliani, and we had an MSBA application to build a new middle school. And then when we went to try to find where we would build that middle school, we couldn't agree. The one was to build it at Florence Street Park, and I know nobody would be for that. The other was to build it at the Pope John site. It was more costly to actually, it was more costly to renovate than to build new, and I don't believe anybody's child wants to go to, you know, what kids are we going to send to Pope John? You know, what does that cost? But we're doing that study now to figure out what the cost would be to renovate Pope John to make a school. We're doing that right now, and that, we've hired a firm to assess the status of Pope John, and they'll provide a cost analysis of what it would take to renovate to service a school, so we'll have that in about a week or so. We, we had many discussions about what to do, and I'm a firm believer in CTE, the young lady whose daughter wants to go to the vet program, veterinarian program. You know, we're failing our children by not having a full-blown, robust vocational program. I had made a recommendation to prior superintendents to turn the old high school vocational program back on, and the problem, the problem there was that they said that they didn't want to have the kids bus up to the high school for vocational programming. I was against that, I said, well, it's better to have some vocational program, more robust vocational program, and have the kids go one week in vocational classes and have them come back to school for another week. Because a lot of kids who want to go to vocational programming don't want to leave their high school, because they want to graduate with their friends. So I don't want to be redundant, because I'm going to make this presentation Monday night. We came to the conclusion that a new, a new high school with a full-blown vocational program would be the way to go. And I've had conversations with MSBA, we'll know in December or in February, there's 60 applicants. I know there's been some numbers that were at the bottom of the list, that they're mad at us because we pulled our last application when we got approved for the middle school. That's not true. We have a great application, and if we're unsuccessful, you know, we'll reapply again next year. If we're unsuccessful, in the meantime, when we're at the properties meeting and we're talking about what is the needs assessment, we'll look at the Devon School, we'll look at the old high school, we'll look at Everett City Hall. I mean, Everett City Hall's 50,000 square feet, we have, I don't know, 80, 100 employees in the building. We were shut down for COVID, we did the same amount of work remotely, we had the window downstairs where everybody was serviced, so we have space in the city. So when you, when the government, when the state government puts out a contract, or the city puts out a contract, they do a needs assessment, they will say, we need X amount of square feet for this particular, you know, particular need. We need X amount of classroom space, we need lab space, we need a cafeteria, so we'll figure out exactly what we need to reduce the overcrowding problem, and more likely, we probably have the space in the city without even using Pope John. Now, my issue here with Pope John is that three years ago, it was voted on by the city council to convert Pope John into senior veterans housing. Three years ago, okay? And all of a sudden, now we're talking about, you know, affordable housing versus kids? No, that's not the case. You know, it's affordable housing, you heard Governor Haley, Governor-elect Haley, she talked about two important things, affordable housing and vocational programming. I've been talking about those two things for the last 16 years. We had, we had 560 applicants apply for 77 units of affordable senior housing at St. Teresa's. There is a serious need for affordable housing, for veterans, for seniors, and for families. And in this project here at St. Teresa's, at Pope John, we're going to have, I believe it's 76 homes for families. Eight of those units will be 30% of AMI, so people who make 30% of the average median income will have the ability to have an apartment. 22 of those will be for people who make 50% of AMI. An AMI in the city of Everett, 50, 60,000? So you're talking about people who make $25,000 will be able to get an apartment in the city. 38 apartments will be at 60% AMI. 18 apartments will be at 80% AMI. So people we know that work in minimum wage jobs will have the ability to have a home over their head, the kids that go to these schools will have their own bedroom. Yeah, I've seen kids taken out of class with specialists in the hallways. My daughter was one, okay, years ago, someone may mention about the Lafayette School not being overcrowded, which was a, you know, but those are called interventionists. They take them out of class, small groups, they have, they have a little classroom. Kids seem very happy in the hallway, yes. What I'm saying is, this is, we shouldn't, you know, we should, we should, Mr. Barrows made a great comment about getting together and working together. My door is open at City Hall for the school administration to come at any time to discuss any need, and that's what we need to do. We need to discuss, we need, former superintendent Forrest and I, never seen eye to eye, but we met once, twice, three times a week on issues. So I don't want to get into anything else, I just want to say that I definitely do need, do believe that we need adequate school space for our children. We'll have the cost on that, we'll have the cost on what would Pope John cost, the tax pays at the city of Everett. Remember, we don't have an MSBA application, and, you know, we can try to get some, some money... monies in January for Pope John, but it's the accelerated, it's called the accelerated program. They don't give you, you know, the 80% that we get, what's our numbers now, 76%? They don't give you that for for a school. So Pope John could cost, we'll get we'll get the number. But that will go on the taxpayers' back. And I know we just approved about $5, $6 million of cap improvements for the schools, for all the schools, we just approved that. We're looking at the Devon School right now. We have a conversation about the Devons and the ownership of the Devons, you know, and so, you know, like I said, we have the old, so let's let's figure out what the need is. Let's do an assessment. What is the need? What classrooms are we talking about? How many kids? What's the space? And let's look to see if we have that. Again, I have a lot more words here to say. I'm going to save it for Monday night.
Mr. Mayor, can I just just make a?
Yeah.
You know, we did try to meet with you.
Jean, Jean, I have plenty of text messages. If you need me to relinquish those, I will. Please don't say that we tried to meet regarding building new schools or let's just move on. Agree to disagree? Agree to disagree?
So we actually had several meetings. We had a Zoom meeting.
We had a Zoom meeting, that's right.
Miss McGlaughlin was there. Also, there was a meeting where both myself and Jeanie came to meet with you.
Right, yeah. We had that meeting recently. We got that over my involvement with parents and children in the schools, yeah.
Yeah, we also talked about Pope John. Well, you were actually a little bit late to the meeting, but Miss Devaney and we talked about Pope John.
I've never been, I'm sorry, I'll let you speak.
Yeah, so we did speak about Pope John. Actually, I had spoken to Miss Devaney at length, actually, we spoke before you came in about Pope John and the options for that. So we met on Zoom, we met at that meeting. I think you remember because, remember, you got mad at me for typing? So, yeah, we've met. But also, just another option, as you said, City Hall's available, we're happy to take that, too. Again, like I said, we'll take whatever space we're given.
Maybe you should look at the administration building also. The admin building, that's three, four floors big, and you should do a school also. So that's why you need to do a needs assessment study. So get that done, let us know what you need, you know. So that's something that should be done, a needs assessment study needs to be done. And in the meeting we had in my office was not about converting Pope John into a high school. That's not, that was not the meeting. I don't want to get tit for tat, but I don't agree with voting for this tonight, but I do agree that we need a new high school with vocational program for our kids that will that will take the pressures off our middle schools. Go back to the the plan was to go back to the power in school days where we had a seventh and eighth grade, which will be here, relieve the pressures in the middle schools, so you go K to six in all the middle schools, and we build a new high school vocational program. That was a plan that was voted by the school committee and the city council. That's going to be addressed in December or by February. We'll we'll get an answer to that. In the meantime, we'll get the report back, the cost to renovate Pope John, and we should also just do a needs assessment to see what exactly we need and where we can find that in the city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize, Mr. Mangan did not speak, and I had.
I am so sorry, Mike. Mr. Mangan, Mr. Mangan.
Thank you, First Lord Lambert for enunciating. And thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of things. One, what the mayor just mentioned, I actually, because I put it on the calendar, so for Monday night, there's about maybe $4 million, between $4 and $4.5 million for different improvements for the schools. And I think one of them was the was, I forget the exact amount, but it was a good amount of money for.
$2 million for the.
For modules at the Kavarian School. So for, I think, for additional space, that's something we talked about. Madam Chair, I I think the best thing, that's just my personal opinion, I know Vice Chair McGlaughlin wanted to put it in committee, I don't think that's personally the best place for it. I think the best thing is to refer this to the city council, but I think we should have a joint meeting, I believe, with a public hearing, and whether it's at the high school, maybe where there's more space. And by that time, the mayor should probably have some figures on what it would cost to taxpayers if it's going to, you know, to renovate Pope John to get it, you know, to clear up some additional space. And they gave the superintendent did provide us some some information tonight on, you know, the overcrowding and so forth, and where possibly we could look at, you know, reducing some of the the students that those particular schools are really overcrowded. So I just think the best thing is that maybe the end of the month or the beginning of October is have a joint meeting, possibly here, even up here at the in the Performing Arts Center. Have the public, let's hear from the public, because by that time, the mayor should have, or his administration should have some facts and figures. And then at that point, we can hear from the public, we can hear from both bodies, we can hear from the superintendent, the mayor, but most importantly, we can hear from the people, the parents or children, like so forth. And I just think it gets everybody in the room together, and we get to hear all that. And at that point, we should we should have more facts and figures in front of us, and at that point, we can make a decision, you know, going forward, what is the best, do they want to do it? You know, because I'm all for, you know, converting space, I mean, and Pope John. But I also want to look at the cost. Like I said, I'm not just going to blindly say yes without looking at the cost, because I know it's going to be whatever the cost it may be for taxpayers. But I just think that's the best way, get everybody in the same room. And I just think that putting it into committee only delays it. So if we ever get everybody together at the end of the month, beginning of October, maybe the Performing Arts Center, and again, I'd like to see my parents. I'm glad one of them came up today and voiced it, but I haven't heard from, I was at Pope John all three meetings, and I unfortunately didn't see a lot of parents there. I saw, you know, some of these folks that were out here, but also residents that lived in the in that area. But I want to hear from my parents is what I really want to hear from, you know, maybe even students. And I think that gives us the best, the best way to bring everybody together. And at that point, we'll have some more information. So that's, that would be my recommendation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert, oh, you haven't spoken yet. Oh, yeah, yeah. Ms. Lambert.
Yeah.
Oh, Millie, I'm sorry, Ms. Cardello.
Thank you. For you.
Thank you. Got a few things on my mind. I do like the idea of the subcommittee now that I'm listening to what the mayor recommended, the needs assessment study. So if it goes to subcommittee, that subcommittee can work with the superintendent and her administration to get this needs assessment done. I also was absolutely thinking the same thing when you spoke, Mr. Mangan, about a public hearing, joint convention with a public hearing. Let's get our people to talk. I think we should even open it up to possibly let people zoom in so that they don't, some people can't get out and can't get in, you know, and hear at night. And it's so important for us as school board, as as a community, to hear from the people that are totally affected by this. We all are, whether people have children or not, has, but their own property or not. You live in Everett, you work in Everett, you're affected by this. Our students are affected. Not affect, positive or negative, is riding with them for the rest of their life. So it's time we do something. It's all about money, it's all about doing the right thing. And honestly, I feel tonight that the city and the school is going to work together in a positive manner. And there's going to be agreements, and there's going to be agree to disagrees and all this stuff. We need to get it done, because I think our true focus is the betterment of our students, which creates a better city in general. So I would like to vote now on that first, because it was seconded, I believe, wasn't it? Okay, and we were speaking on that motion. So and then I think the next one, after Ms. Lambert speaks, of course, and whoever else, but I think that Mr. Mangan should put that in the form of a motion, I'd be honored to to second that, Joe. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And why I second in this is this is not a new issue. I think it's something that we've been looking at for a considerable amount of time. We've had plenty of opportunity to speak to people, whether parents or not. That is one thing that affects all of us, is the young people in our city is what makes a community. The young people in our city who will take over the reins. And if we're not preparing them in the right way, our kids can't wait. This is going before the city council on Monday. My concern is that if we, you know, we can meet all we want, we had asked for the meeting in the spring because of that. Now it's come down to, it's in the city council's hands, and I think we need to be on record on whether we support it. I do think we've all had enough time to do our own personal due diligence and investigation. And like I said, every year for a student, every year. And our kids might be happy in situations that doesn't make it right. Our teachers might be doing a great job, but they could be doing better if they're given the resources. That's nothing against any teacher. I'm saying if they're given the resources, our kids can fly. And I I know that our special ed students, I've seen our EL students in a year's time start proposing policy. So I know what our young people are capable of, and that's just, that's just the tip of the iceberg. If we give them the resources, the space, if we give our teachers the resources and everything they need to do what they do best, we have no idea what we can see from our young people. So again, I support the the letter.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chairwoman, I think we have superseded sending the letter tonight. I think we've all gone on the record that we need additional classroom space in the city. I don't think we need to send a letter to our colleagues to denounce, to announce what we just discussed for the last half hour or so. I think that's been very clear to our colleagues who will be at home watching this, and Councilor Latanzi, as I said, who's in the audience tonight. So I think that's almost a moot point at this point. I think, where do we go from here? And I think that's to start having some meetings to discuss this matter in more greater detail. And that's first step. I agree with Mr. Mangan that a joint convention would not be bad, once we have those studies that are back, that the mayor, De Maria discussed. But I believe in the meantime, we could set up a properties subcommittee, which is within our jurisdiction. We have to remember that there is a separation of powers here. There's a city council and school committee. City council will have ultimate decision on what they do with their building, which is the Pope John, it's not the school's building, it's our request. But we have jurisdiction on whether or not we have a properties subcommittee meeting, which can discuss the detailed necessity, needs of where we would take students and how we would merge a building, and what grades we would merge that into, and so forth. We could do that within days. We could do that 72 hours, Mr. Mangan, I believe, is a notice has to go out. We could do that very quickly. And later on, we could ask to have that joint convention, where we can hear from parents and students and people that actually are in the buildings, maybe some faculty, or anonymously, or however they want to come out and discuss it with us, whether they're comfortable doing it publicly or privately, or whatever the case might be. So I think there's multiple steps that we could take immediately to start these discussions. A second meeting at City Hall, I was voted on discussing this matter, and if I wasn't notified about that meeting, I'm sorry, I didn't attend it in the mayor's office to discuss the need of the schools. I didn't know about it. So I do apologize to my colleagues who voted to appoint myself and Chairwoman Cristiano to discuss this matter with the administration, your administration, the mayor's administration, but I wasn't invited to that meeting. So I do apologize for not being there. That that being said, I would put in a formal motion that we refer this to the properties subcommittee, and we ask for a meeting to discuss the needs of converting a building or additional classroom space into usable space in our community. I will put that in the form of a motion.
I have Mr. Marcus.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the chair a question. This is just, we're non-binding, right?
That's correct.
So only the city council can go forward with it.
That's right.
So we were sitting here, all talking about it, and, you know, and the mayor has some good night. We're just with everybody's idea. Us forward with a yes vote. Let them do what they got to do. It's their job, our job, if we want to recommend it to them. But just do that. I mean, instead of going back and forth, it's going to be hung up there for a while. If we got to say something up there, and they want to figure it out to do it, they should move forward. So we already made a motion to go forward.
I have Riley next.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. And I just want to provide a student opinion. I don't think this matter should be be pushed further and further and further into the future, because you can walk around the school, you can see, as adults, you can see students outside in on in desks and hallways, but you're not actually there. Try walking from the second floor to the fourth floor in three minutes? You can't. It's a sea of people. And this is a matter that needs to be addressed now. We need space now. Going to a classroom, desks are filled, every seat is filled, we have to bring desks from other classrooms, this and that. And I think that a new high school is needed, but a new high school takes a long time to build. We need some other way to hold our students. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Barrows.
Just thank you, Madam Chair. Just said we have a motion. This is not a muted point that this body can vote, as a student representative said, and and Mr. Marcus, and send this matter, this is the wish of this body. It could be non-binding, doesn't matter. This is the wish of this body, and we do have a motion, we should go on record, and those who'd like to vote no, vote no, those who'd like to vote yes, vote yes, but we should vote on that motion.
So we do have a motion, though, first.
Correct.
For it to go to the properties committee, and then we're going to take.
No, no, no. The motion that I made, and and Ms. Lambert seconded, was to send a formal letter from this body to the council. That was the first.
Right, but the motion to send this resolution to committee takes precedent.
Right.
It takes precedent. It's not whoever made the motion first and seconded, it's the motion in Robbitt's Rules.
Correct, correct. So the motion is to, I just want to clarify the motion that you are referring to. The motion to send this to committee is to send these requests to a subcommittee, even though we already discussed this on April 25th. Is that correct?
That's correct. I have Ms. Cardello.
I think we have a little confusion. We should just do a letter. Sorry, thank you. We should do the letter, send it to the council. I think we're all on the same page with that. But I also think the idea of the committee going forward, so I think if they rescind that, and we do the letter for us, make everybody happy, and quiet down, not think that, you know, we're not all on board here, because we are, we know the truth of the matter. And then I think we should still have that committee, because there's more work to be done on this. This doesn't end with us, you know, going forward and sending a letter.
But procedurally, we have the first motion.
He can rescind it.
Did you rescind that?
No, he didn't, but he could. Just my suggestion.
It's not rescinding.
And then come back with it after we we send the letter.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is because we can't tell the city council what to do, we can only request it. So we want to do that, get that moved on, and then talk about a committee and what the committee would be responsible for, so that everybody's happy and everybody's working towards the same end goal. And hopefully, we may have some resolutions to resolve some issues by December, when we find out if we're going to get the monies. And then we have the answers already. And that's what I'm looking forward to, that we know what we're going to do with the money if we get the money. Or I should say, when we get the money. Thank you for letting me say my suggestion.
Thank you. Okay, so the first motion is the motion to send this item to the property property committee. All in favor?
No.
No. Record vote, please.
Record vote. Mr. Barrows?
No.
Ms. Cardello?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
No.
Mr. McGlaughlin? Madam Chair? No. All right, next up, we have the, Mr. Mayor.
So we're voting to send the letter to the city council to ask them to not build the affordable housing, to hold the building? Can someone just read the letter?
The motion, yeah, sure.
Can you read the letter? Thank you.
Do you have the letter, Madam Superintendent? Okay.
President Hamlin, I'm writing in my role as superintendent of the Everett Public Schools and secretary of the Everett School Committee to formally ask that the city retain the former Pope John High School for use by the Everett Public Schools. Access to the site and the funds necessary to convert the building into usable space would greatly help the EPS to address overcrowding in classrooms throughout our district. The school committee voted to authorize the drafting and submission of this letter during its regular meeting on Wednesday, September 7th, 2022. Thank you for your time and consideration."
So not only asking the city council to hold the building, but also to secure the funds to renovate the building to be a school, not knowing what the cost is gonna be or what the needs are?
Basically, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think it's important that the school committee go on record that we do need space. We need it yesterday.
Yeah.
And, and again, we're all late people and we're looking around and we're looking at my alma mater, Pope John, and we're seeing, gee, this just isn't gonna take too long.
It's not gonna take too long to renovate it to a school? That you think, in your professional opinion?
Not my professional, I'm not in construction.
Would you want to get the report back first before we make a vote on something we don't have all the information about? And you also telling me there's no need for veterans housing as a former veterans commissioner? You think? No, no, is that what we're doing here this evening? We're pitting kids against seniors and veterans and families? So let's do a needs assessment and figure out what we need and let's see if we have that in our city. We have, we have a building on Broadway that housed 2,000 kids. A high school that I went to that is maybe one-tenth occupied. So, 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 a building that we do own, and it could show that it could be more costly to renovate than Pope John. It could show that. And also, don't forget, we took a vote. That old high school was supposed to be senior housing and we still haven't fulfilled that promise to the residents. So tonight, you know, we talk about a joint convention. We have conversations about joint, do you want me not to go there? I won't go there, I won't go there. What is wrong with sending it to a committee and getting together and telling the city that this is exactly what we need? We need to take X amount of classrooms out of X amount of schools to reduce the overcrowding here. We need space for guidance councils. We need, we need, you know, gymnasium. We need whatever it needs, a needs assessment to figure out how do we reduce the overcrowding? We're spending $6 million, $5, $6 million, $2 million to build modular classrooms at the Kavarian. So do we need to build a modular classroom at the Kavarian if we're gonna renovate Pope John? Because these are things I need to know. Because we don't have a piggy bank here. We just don't, we don't, you know, every time we spend money, it's tax dollars that we have to raise on tax owners that rents continue to go up in this city. People aren't able to pay their rents, their mortgages, their waters, their taxes. They're able to buy groceries. Have you seen the lines at the pantries for food? Have you seen the lines at the pantries for food? Affordable housing is a big issue in this city. I am building housing and I'm trying to build a viable transit system so we can move people in and out of our city. The more housing we, you know, people talk about rent control and this and that. No, it's called supply and demand. The more housing we put on the market, it reduces the cost for people to live in our city. You want to keep overloading them with debt, then you'll have people not able to live in our city. We won't have any children here anymore because we'll gentrify the whole city. Okay? So let's, let's, let's get the information that we need first before we make a determination here this evening. Okay, because I live and breathe this job 24/7 for the last 17 years. I know what the residents need in the city. So let's do it, let's do a needs assessment and let's figure out what the schools need.
All right, we're gonna do a five-minute recess. All right, this meeting will come to order. And again, let's maintain some civility here. So, Mr. Mayor, you?
Madam Chairman, thank you. All I want to say is there is no need for us to send a letter to the city council. It's up to the city council Monday night to vote on whether they want to maybe hold the building until the feasibility, the assessment is done from the schools and the cost analysis is done to renovate Pope John, or if they want to go ahead and if they believe that the case to build more affordable housing for veterans and seniors and family is important. So it's up, you know, we talk about rules here a lot, about the rules of the superintendent, the rules of the school committee. This is not in our purview to tell the city council that they need to hold on to our building and they need to renovate it to build classroom spaces without knowing, I can't vote on that. I don't know the costs. I'd like to know what the costs are. I'd like to know what the needs are. Yes, school's overcrowded. I've been saying that forever. I've been saying that forever and I've been saying we need vocational program forever. Who do you think brought the vocational program to the school that is here now? It was me who convinced the prior administration, the school administration, to put those vocational programs in there. And it's still not enough. I want to renovate the old high school to bring those vocational programs back because I know lots of parents who came and get their kids into vocational schools because of the waiting list and the kids don't want to leave. So I'll meet every day until we get a good plan that the residents will, will love and that can afford. We have demands on our police department. We want to build a new police department. You've seen the police department. We're putting that on hold right now because of these conversations. Better days, great days are coming ahead, especially what's happened on Route 16, the amount of revenue that we're gonna generate. But we have a power plant, Madam Chairman, that's going offline in 2024. It's gonna be an $11 to $15 million hit on taxpayers. $11, $15 million more that we have to raise. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of conversations we need to have. So before we send a letter to the school, the city council, let's stay in our lane as a school, school department. Let's do the needs assessment. That's all I'm saying. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I have Mr. McLaughlin on the motion.
Madam Chairman, thank you. I find it sort of ironic that we have these conversations this evening because two meetings ago, I believe, I checked with Mr. O'Connor, I had put a piece forward to discuss classroom space in our schools to talk about this matter and got referred back to sponsor. And that was okay, that was in private of my colleagues. But they didn't want to discuss it then, but it's become such a hot button issue now. It's kind of interesting. That being said, I think if we're gonna send a letter to the city council, the letter really should be, please hold off on their vote Monday night until we get an assessment study done, until we find out what the needs are of the school. We know there is a need for additional space. But having a subcommittee need and being able to give some substantial information to these, these folks in the audience, to the parents of the Everett Public Schools, to the students, that this, sorry, well, I apologize, I drew a blank, sorry. She made some great comments. And when I was in, when I was in school, I was one of those students that got pulled out of their class and was taught in a hallway in an interventionist setting. I sat at the old Everett High School. I can remember sitting up on the second floor in Miss Theda Rigis's class and being pulled out to be able to do that. That was 20 years ago. I don't like to admit that often, but that was 20 years ago that that happened. So this isn't something new. This is something that's consistently happened, unfortunately, for a community who envies their students and they want to come to our schools because they're so great. They want to come to the Everett Public Schools and we know that and we've talked about that for the years. So if we're gonna send a letter Monday night, we should send a letter that says, "Dear city council, please hold off on voting for anything at Pope John High School until X, Y, and Z, and until X, Y, and Z is discussed. We have a plan forward that we can go out and talk to residents across the entire city about and be able to explain tax increases and explain the need and how we're gonna merge schools and how we're gonna relieve pressure in different buildings and be able to bring intervention space and guiding, whatever we need." That should be the letter that we send to the city council on Monday night. Not that we're in favor of what we're already in favor of, which we've already spoken about this evening, now almost an hour. If we wanted, I would put in a form of a motion that we send a letter to the city council asking that they hold off on their vote. This way Pope John is not moved forward on Monday evening and until we're able to have the discussions that are needed so that we can all have a thoughtful process and discussion, not just some may say yelling and others yelling and we don't get anywhere because I've gone through the Pope John meeting and we didn't get to hear that development very detailed. We didn't get to know much. I left Pope John last week not knowing much more than I came there knowing. A few facts, thanks to Mr. Latanzi, not Council Latanzi, but Matthew. That being said, those discussions should happen in our community before we make any decision. And, you know, I'm not gonna please everyone and that's okay. I'm not here to please everyone. That being said, I'm here to represent the city of Everett as a whole, not just one small group. And I would put in a form of a motion that we send a letter to the city council asking them to hold off on their vote regarding Pope John in any manner until we are able to have assessment needs studied done, until we have a properties committee, subcommittee, so we can understand the real needs of our schools. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so I have, do I have a second on that one?
A second.
Okay, so I have one motion first is to, motion's been made and seconded to approve, approval to submit a formal letter to the Everett City Council recommending that the former Pope John, the 23rd High School, be converted into space for the Everett Public Schools. I have a motion and second on that and I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
No.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You have so moved, 5-4.
5-4 was the vote. So you have the green light to send the letter?
Madam Chairwoman? On a point of personal privilege?
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
On a point of personal privilege?
Absolutely.
I think that no one should leave this library this evening under the assumption that we were voting one way or another, that we were voting against students or in favor of senior veteran housing.
You're out of, you're out of order.
I'm out of order. That's fine, you've ruled me out before.
So when you rise on a point of personal privilege? No, I mean, listen, I want to explain to the audience why I'm ruling you out of order. It has to be about the safety, your health, your integrity, and personal property. And I didn't hear that, so.
I was getting to the integrity part, but you didn't allow me to finish. But that's okay, I don't need to finish.
All right.
My God.
Madam Superintendent? Please read the next order of business.
Item number three is the approval of the district's strategic library plan. A copy of the strategic plan is included in this week's packet. With your approval, this will be submitted to the Massachusetts Regional Library System as part of our ongoing efforts to bring back libraries in our K-8 schools. The report serves two primary functions. One, it summarizes the considerable work that has already been completed under the direction of library director Mary Puleo, who is here with us this evening, notably the status of our libraries and collections. Two, it outlines strategic priorities and the steps we will take over the next year to move this initiative forward. Before we move on, I want to thank the members of the focus group, all of whom were instrumental in the compilation of this report. They are Michelle Capone, Stephanie Gertz, Emily Gould, Ashley Kempkis, Sherri Lyons, Nicole Mumbi, and Keith Spencer. Special thanks also to the students, EPS families, and members of the community who took the time to fill out our surveys. That information was invaluable in completing this report. Once the strategic plan is approved and entered into the record, we will post it on the EPS website. If you have specific questions about this important initiative, Ms. Puleo is with us this evening and I encourage you invite her to come forward. If not, this is certainly something on which I will provide future updates.
I have very rarely been so happy to move for favorable action.
Motion is made and seconded for favorable action.
A second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
9-0, votes into the record.
9-0, you have so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number four is the approval of the EPS Student Activities Account Policies Manual. The EPS Student Activities Account Policies Manual outlines the purpose, responsibilities, general operating procedures, and policies that govern the establishment and operation of student activity accounts in accordance with mass general law. The school committee has the responsibility of annually approving and adopting the School Student Activities Policies Manual. So the one that you have before you is the one for the 2022-2023 school year.
Move, so move for favorable action.
A second.
Motion is made for second favorable action. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Not in the affirmative, zero in the negative, you have so moved. Not in the affirmative, you have so moved.
Thank you. Item number five is approval of the school committee's calendar of regular meetings for the 2022-2023 school year. In your packets, you'll find a calendar of proposed dates for our regular meetings for the 2022-2023 school year. Whenever the dates align, we meet on the first and third Mondays of every month. Of course, we have several Monday holidays and vacation weeks that prevent us from setting those dates in stone. This calendar, which is yours to approve or change, includes a handful of Tuesday meetings. As per our rules, in the case of Monday holidays, we simply move the meeting to the following night. In the case of vacation weeks, the rules state that we can move the meeting to the following Monday. But this calendar proposes that we meet the following Tuesday so as not to conflict with Monday city council meetings, which was an issue that was brought up last year. So once we improve our calendar, we can share it with the community and plan our meetings accordingly.
Ms. Lambert? If I could just ask that we amended to notate specifically the April 17th to April 25th. April 25th. It's color-coded, but on the vacation weeks, it's just omitted. And with that amendment, I move for favorable action.
Second motion?
Motion's made in second with the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so we have no items under, um, Roman numeral six, um, sorry, seven or eight, so we'll move on to Roman numeral nine, which is bills and payroll.
Mr. Mangan?
Chair, thank you. Um, I move to submit bills and payroll in an amount of $1,156,244.05.
A second. Motion is made in second to submit bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,156,244.05. Clerk, a call or all?
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative, you have so submitted. Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to pay bills and payroll in an amount of $1,156,244.05.
A second. Motion is made in second to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,156,244.05. Clerk, a call or all?
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative, you have so passed. And before we, uh, looks like we're gonna adjourn, but just to let the viewing, uh, audience and everybody here know that we, we will be postponing the executive session that is listed here, just so everybody knows we're, you know, that we're just, when we adjourn, we're really adjourning. Yes.
And I just want to clarify that that was upon the request of the SEIU, that we postponed till September 19th.
Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So should we make a proper motion, I don't, to you, to Madam Superintendent, is it, do we have a time, a time, and would it be the next meeting or something? Do, do we know?
So actually, yeah, I would respectfully request that we post, make a motion to postpone this until our September 19th meeting.
So I make that in the formal motion?
A second. Motion is made in second to, uh, amend it, uh, to lay this matter, the executive session on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. You have so moved. Time for adjournment.
I'll make, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Motion's made in second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. You have so adjourned.[1743.86]